Regular planning commission. I guess it's a special meeting of planning commission. Please call the roll.
Walski.
Here.
Cover.
Present.
Marsh.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
He has some projects, Addison, Cardy.
Here.
Now.
Here.
Cover. And then. We're heading here. Wise more here.
Here. Awesome. Thank you. Definitely a call. Right. First on the agenda, action on the minutes from the regular meeting of August 7th. If someone moved the minutes.
Um, man.
It's a part. That's part. Move down to Port Hill. Any changes, corrections?
Under the law. This is discussion about. Don't let that to the cemetery there. I know three class and breasts. It's taken. Here that I did the distance with cemetery is not adequate. That's not. Or I don't believe it is. If I did say that, that's not what happened. There is our. Distance is fine. No planting increase was the issue. Uh, here he's been in trouble. We're not going to provide an adequate screen, screen evergreens. Low evergreens. As opposed to root kind of fur would be much before.
Look at that direction.
So, um, when do you know?
What's page?
I know the pages aren't done. That's my, that's my idea.
It's one time I have some motion.
I've got your motion. Okay.
Very for chill. Okay.
Anything else?
So it's not just as you want planting.
And even the planting, because we've got a lot of planting, if you recall. But there was no real reason. Like freezing.
Okay, so screening.
Evergreens.
Yeah, we talked about evergreen.
Yeah, nevergreen.
You need to be. Okay, there's a big large green. Like I want to be large. If you have any changes, that it. Better change. Right. All favor of the, uh. Minutes as a minute, say aye. Uh, having a pulse. All right, minister approved. Moving on. Prove the agenda. When you settle with the agenda. So. For you currently support, uh, cover and changes to the agenda.
On the way to the end. This is.
Oh, yes, we do have a public comment that was submitted, so we want to make sure, um, it's in front of all for review for a public hearing tonight. Um, okay, so with that, I can, we have a, or sorry, sorry, all in favor of the agenda as posted, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Um, okay, the agenda is approved. Moving on. We have one public hearing scheduled for tonight. There's a major amendment to the final plan for the Gilbert Company Old Mill Site, uh, PUD located at thirty five. On fifteen Broad Street. I think this is the first time we go in the post that we're actually in the place while we're like, so that's an interesting place. So, um, with that, I think we will have staff go forward and have a, of their presentation and then be able to open up the public comments. Um, after that.
Okay. All right. So as, um, the chairman has indicated, you're presenting a public hearing to consider a major amendment to the final site plan. Um, the location is thirty five fifteen Broad Street in the place we are currently sitting. Council has selected thirty five, uh, fifteen Broad Street as the temporary location for, uh, the Dexter Fire Department Fire Station. During the demolition of the existing fire station in eighty one forty main. Um, and the reconstruction of that new fire station at the same location. Um, there would be too much activity on that very small site, uh, to accommodate the continued operation of the fire station. Um, while that's going on. The, uh, city council seeks the amendment to officially to the Gilbert Company Old Mill Site PUD. Uh, to chain, to allow a change of use and interior remodel existing, uh, of existing three thousand thirty five square feet from, um. Office and office and storage to the temporary fire station, which would include overnight accommodations. Um, and kitchen, day room facilities for fire personnel. It would also include the, uh, the erection of a temporary detached accessory structure. Uh, uh, to house a fire engine and the construction of a direct access pathway sidewalk, basically. Between the, the building, this building, the rear of it, and the temporary detach structure until such time as the new fire station is completed. Excuse me. Uh, Washtenaw County Sheriff will also be temporarily displaced from eighty one forty. However, the, there are two existing offices within City Hall that's going, that will be used for sheriff deputies. So there's no need to amend the PUD as it's just office use and the PUD allows offices. So just to give you a little bit of, uh, the development agreement history. Um, the subject site, it's owned Village Residential. That's basically the underlines is the district. And it's got the special PUD zoning district and it's specifically for office and storage purposes pursuant to the final site plan. Um, the approved final site plan, excuse me, uh, which was in nineteen ninety nine, showed a nine thousand eight hundred fifty five square foot. Principal building and two detached structures, which are just outside there. One is, uh, though over nineteen hundred square feet and the other is only a hundred and seventy square feet. Uh, in September, on September twenty ninth, twenty eleven, there wasn't a major, it was a minor amendment to the PUD that was approved administratively. And that was to allow the use of approximately five thousand eight hundred ninety five square feet. Uh, to go from storage to office use. And then on February fourteenth, twenty twelve, there was another name, minor amendment to the PUD. And it again was approved administratively to allow the conversion and build out of existing storage space to office space. Uh, there were also minor architectural changes to windows and door openings to allow more natural light and ventilation. And there was the creation of ten additional parking spaces. Um. The amendment process, um, a change of use constitutes a major amendment. And requires the amendment to be approved to the approved final site plan and the development agreement in accordance with section nine eleven of the ordinance. Uh, planning commission is conducting or must conduct a public hearing to consider this major change before making the recommendation to council to approve, deny. Or approve the requested change with conditions. City council takes final action. Um. One of the things that was brought up, I'm going to drag this for a moment so that you can look at this. In these public comments, uh, from the resident, uh, Zach Michelle's three, three, two, five, over. He questioned the process. Um, this interpretation of the ordinance is that. Excuse me, uh, because the language in the ordinance says that, um, you go back to the original application process. Public area, et cetera. Um, this actually needs to go conceptual review first. Then they can come in for, uh, city could come in for preliminary and or final, either separately or together. When I read original, I interpreted that to mean original as it meant the application was final. Because both. Every single one of those. Um, reviews, conceptual, preliminary and final require an application. I interpreted original application to be the final. Um, based on the entire languages in that section. Um. We have spoken to the city attorney about it and, uh, his suggestion, uh. For. I want to check if it's the proper term. If the, if the, um, sorry. If planning commission. Planning commission could, uh, because section nineteen oh six D allows the commission to recommend deviations. You could recommend a deviation from the requirement of conceptual as part of your recommendation for approval, if you so choose. If you're not comfortable with that, um, uh, it would be the city attorney's suggestion, taking a mirror conservative approach. That the commission treats a nice review as the conceptual. And then set another special meeting as quickly as reasonably possible in order to, to conduct a public hearing, to do the preliminary and final. Uh. That way this moves forward to city council, that's it's one of its actual meetings and you move on that process. And so while you're pulling that out from swinging. So when staff went ahead and reviewed this, um, they look, we looked at the standards in section nineteen oh four. Which is the site plan criteria. I'm sorry, the PUD design standards in section nineteen oh four. Uh, and the site plans criteria in section twenty one oh nine, as well as the Gilbert Company Development Agreement. Um, the comments that are provided are the ones that staff felt were the, um, applicable standards and criteria based on the request. Um, as far as master plan, you always look at consistency with the master plan, whether it's an amendment, uh, born from the original that comes in. Um, and it, it is consistent with the natural plan goal objective. Um, the community facility and service halls are provide timely efficient. Uh, and quality police, fire and safety, uh, governmental services and facilities to our residents, businesses and visitors. The objective provide reliable quality by our services and facilities. So this amendment would be consistent with that. The zoning, um. When this was approved, the way we did PUDs was there was a, there was, um, uh, the PUD was, was. Not the same as we do now. You have an area plan, you had the zoning and the PUD was an over like. So it was Village Residential with the special plan unit to zoning destination. It was specifically for office and storage purposes. Um. I provided for you information regarding, um, the language that's in the, um, in the development agreement regarding the zoning ordinance. Um, uh, in this year, uh, city council adopted the new ordinance. As you know, it eliminated. The ER residential district and established two form based districts, the VR one and VR two. And it designated this site as plain given development. That's what it's known. Um, prior to that adoption of that ordinance or of this ordinance, government and community buildings were specially uses in the VR zoning district. In the two new zoning districts, it's the same thing for special land uses. Um, according to the regulatory plan and both the VR one and VR two. This site is, uh, it runs onto a village type street, but since it's a key, since it's a PUD, it doesn't have a site type. Um, in, um, in the VR one and VR two district, a site type B is most similar to this subject site. Uh, institutional building form is permitted with special approval on a village street type, street type with a, I'm sorry. That's supposed to be site type B, my apologies. Existing city hall building, uh, is considered an institutional building form, therefore status by name, it is consistent with the zoning. Um, excuse me. Our king, the proposed temporary detach structure does resolve or will result in this displacement of three existing parking spaces on the west side. Um, it will also restrict the use of nine parking spaces. Um, because both the Washington County Sheriff and Dexter area fire personnel will need certain dedicated spaces. Uh, there are thirty spaces currently on site. The change to those none, um, uh, the city is proposing to do six on street parking spaces on here on the street. Not on the existing pavement in the grassy area, which is probably more right away. Since it's sixty four right away at this point. Um. Staff felt that although that is basically a discrepancy of three parking spaces, that it should be sufficient. But planning commission, as always, will need to make that determination. Um, the other concern was noise. This site is surrounded mostly by residential. Um, however, there is industrial to our immediate west and there's an active railroad, um, to the south. Um, uh, passenger and freight trains operate sometimes throughout the day and the night. Um, that results in the warning bells going off at the track crossing and the train has to be activated per federal standards. According to the U S Department of Transportation, for both railroad administration, maximum bug level of train horn is a hundred and ten decibels. Um, the minimum sound level is ninety six decibels. Decimal levels for emergency vehicle sirens range between a hundred and ten and a hundred and twenty decibels. The proposed temporary fire station is going to operate twenty four seven. Um, or with approximately two to three fire personnel per shift. And the average maximum number of runs for the entire DAFD is approximately five per day according to the fire chief. And according to information that's been provided to the city as part of the whole fire station, um, research. The average number of just station one, that's Dexter, uh, the eighty one forty is less than, we don't have a number specifically to that. So staff used the number five, which was the average for the entire district. A small number of those runs will occur or do occur in the overnight, it can be expected. When the fire engine leaves on an emergency call, emergency lights will be activated, but according to chief. The siren will only be activated in the event that there is traffic out here on the street. The beginning and end shifts of the Washtenaw County Sheriff will temporarily relocate to the substation inside of township at that fire station. However, deputies will have access to the city hall offices here twenty four seven. Um, there will be no overnight parking, however, sheriff vehicles. The sheriff generally only activates, excuse me, activates emergency lights and sirens when responding to life threatening nine one one calls. Um, not emergency calls that they have to respond to. There are the lights and flashing. The staff does not anticipate temporary fire station use will create more noise nuisance than the existing. Train operations and other operations within this neighborhood, however, again, that way you have to, you have to the planning commission to determine. And then outdoor storage equipment, um, the proposed fire station operations are going to require the erection of a, uh, temporary detach structure. And that's in order to park the, the fire engine. Uh, the footprint of the proposed structure is fifty by thirty three and will have a height of just under sixteen feet. That's the average height for a detached structure, uh, as I recall in that ordinance. The detached structure will have electrical and mechanical insecurity systems installed and will be properly fastened to the ground for the obvious reasons. Um, but it, uh, habitable space plumbing systems are not proposed for the structure. Decontamination of the fire truck, washing of the fire truck. Um, um, filling of the fire truck with water isn't happening on the side. It'll either happen at the other fire stations, um, uh, or for water service to fill the fire engine, they'll go to TBW by. Um, sorry, we swore to you again. Um. Development agreement does not permit outdoor storage of materials and equipment. Um, but it has no commentary on the, on detached structures. Safe, secure storage of the fire engine is necessary. And the planning commission will need to determine if the proposed temporary structure relates to the sound surrounding environment in regards to texture, scale, massing proportion and color. Um, uh, the architect that submitted the plan on behalf of the city is online. So any questions that you may have regarding that structure or anything dealing with the site plan, he will be able to address those questions as well. Um. The place, um, you have a full packet. Of information, uh, that was provided along with the motions. Uh, sorry to be so detailed for you and repeat things, but, um, um. It's important. So let me know if you have any questions.
Sure. Thank you, Michelle. And, um, and Megan's here, but she doesn't have any.
Yeah, she doesn't have. But she's here in case you have any other technical questions that I might need to.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, so with that, um, since you are, we are the applicant, the city, basically. Um, we can open up the public comment. First, we'll go to the audience. If there's anyone present here that would like to speak. Uh, you can step forward and say your address, and then if there's anyone online, we'll go there. So, um, at this time, we'll open a public hearing at seven nineteen. Five minutes.
Hi, Susan Glass.
Can you please approach the voting table?
I'm Susan Glassby on the right of process. Eighty one sixty here on. I'm concerned about the parking on your on the street. That you're talking about adding. Um, and I'm wondering why you can't arrange with Almetal Finishing to use their parking lot. If we're talking about nine, ten cars, they have plenty of time for that. And I'd really like to have this street open. A lot of really big trucks can through here regularly, either going to this or to the time of time down metal finish. And it will be problematic if you do cars park on the street on a regular basis. I know this because. In the fall, when the sand hill is open, we have cars parked all the way up here. So that's my.
Okay, thank, thank you. Anybody else present that would like to address the commission?
My name is Ronald Miller. I live at seven, six, five, four Forest Street in Nectar. Um, I would ask that the planning commission proceed with extreme care and caution. And I would actually recommend that you not approve at this time this application. Uh, for. Actually, many of the reasons that, uh, Michelle addressed that I think are not fully answered. And I felt some inadequacies in the, uh. The description and the way in which this process, uh, came before the planning commission in her rather hurried manner. This is a, as, as I'm sure everybody's aware, it's fairly, has been for a long time, fairly contentious issue. And, uh, I, I think that that points to the, that this particular site chosen. Was not given due diligence as to really the impact and asking for. An assessment by the, uh, planning commission at this time without, I think, a lot more information and specifics. Such as the parking, such as the rationale reason council is proceeding at this point with this, uh, proposal. Uh, and when I think that, when I, again, I'm going over the zoning guidelines that, um. I know Mr. Michael's, uh, presented, I think there's still some serious. Questions of whether or not you, you are, by moving forward, adhering to your own zoning guidelines. And you're asking for a lot of variance yet being given to the council to proceed in, uh, with the fire station at this particular location. I think has a lot of still, as yet to be determined apart from cost. Um, in such a, so, uh, again, I would ask that, uh, you, you. Not approve this at this time, and I think it. I, I would probably adhere more to the conservative interpretation of the legal advice that was given. That there is another part of the process that was not given and, and public comment and is due at that time.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else that would like to address the commission?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Ted Higgin. I live across the way in the Westridge South Division and, uh. I, I guess I have to say I'm, I'm close to an expansion into the park. Uh, the parking area down there that we're giving up is, uh, very popular. Uh, it's well used by a lot of people locally and, and including my family members to come to visit. Um, I don't believe that we need any more expansion in our downtown area. I think the location for the new fire station would be much better up the street where there was a big billboard advertising the future home at one time, which is what I personally voted for. So it. Uh, and I guess finally.
I'm sorry. I think you're speaking to a different issue, unfortunately. Um, we're, we're only talking about the issue of the temporary structures located here. At this site, not at the, not at the current fire station. I'm sorry. So I apologize. No, it's okay. But thank you. Um, is there anybody else that would like to address the commission? Is there anybody online that would like to address the commission? There you go. A hand is raised. You can, yeah. Um. And. Issue I.
Yes, you should be listening. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, can you, everyone hear me? Okay? Okay. Hi, I'm Jamie Griffin. I live at four, six, three Preston Circle. And I appreciate the previous residents' comments, and yes, they may not be directly related to this topic, but they are related. And I think some of the difficulty with this conversation is the way these issues have been separated and partitioned out and not considered as a whole. So I personally would have welcomed those comments, um, even though they don't like directly address this. Uh, I'm just going to echo some comments that have already been raised tonight. To me, this application has all the hallmarks of an unnecessarily rushed process. A special meeting has been called and yet this application hasn't even been properly signed by the applicant. To the slew of issues enumerated by Zach Michelle's and his written comments, I add the following. There's no mention of signage. There's no mention of hazardous material, storage or waste. Why is there not a review by our CWA consultant? I've appreciated Megan's careful consideration of these issues, and I was hoping to see her review here. Have the nearby residents been notified about the increase in noise and emergency vehicle traffic that will result? What are your thoughts about locating our fire trucks across the railroad tracks from the majority of city residents? Does our fire chief agree that this in-city solution is actually preferable to a solution that would be outside of the city limits? Given potential changes in staffing or other logistics that might be required by the situation? Per the application, it says, quote, "The burden shall be on the applicant to show good cause for any requested change," meaning to the current status quo at that site. As you all know, the need to temporarily locate the fire station here at thirty five fifteen Broad Street is the result. Of an artificially constrained problem created by four members of council. That decision flies in the face of recommendations made by our former fire chief. And is of concern even to our current chief, though he is less direct in his language. Can you really take this statement, "We'll operate from wherever you put us," that's a paraphrase, as a glowing endorsement of the current direction? After all, firefighters are people who run into burning buildings as everyone else is running out. We've recently brought a construction manager on board, and even he has questioned why we're not considering an alternative location. Back in August twenty one, AR Brower submitted an application for an amendment to the approved final PUD site plan of Grandview Commons. Staff subjected his application to numerous revisions. Where is the same scrutiny here? I've mentioned to several people that I've been impressed with their planning commission, and I have. You are thoughtful. You are experienced and you are passionate about what you do, and I thank you for that. As with the last PUD applications about which I spoke, I encourage you not to let your over familiarity with these processes. To keep you from crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is. As a council member and as a resident, I rely on you to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else online that would like to address the commission?
I'm not having.
Okay. The nobody online, moving forward, we'll close the public hearing at seven twenty seven. Okay, so. Um, with that, we have in our packet, of course, uh, sample motion. We have some discussion items that Michelle identified both in her presentation as well as in her memo. Uh, we also have a, uh. A, that was referenced a couple of times, actually, a communication also from, from the Member of the Republic. Basically with some concerns outlined there, some of which Michelle has, uh, responded to as well. And, um, I guess with that, we'll open it up to the commission. If, if there's somebody willing to make a motion, that would be great. And then we can start, um, additional discussion and we'll take it from there. So with that, I'll turn it over.
Well, I'll start with this one now. I'm, no, okay. And I think we should have discussed first about the process we want to use, which we've had to be processed, presented to us. I don't think this is proper, a proper use of the site. I don't think it's proper use of, of that change to PUD. I don't think it's right for neighborhood. I don't think it's rushed. I don't think it hasn't been subjected to the same. I don't know. About what process we're using.
At the house. Okay. There are additional comments, questions? Okay. Yeah.
I'm, I'm not going to support this tonight either for a lot of the things we've reviewed, but, uh, neighbors have suggested and some of the things. That, uh, you know, I brought up in the, in here, but I want to comment on the process. When I looked at this and I was looking at how PUD planning is modified. It, it has a statement in here that says, you know, "All amendments shall follow procedures and conditions here and required for the original submit. My first review of this was the original submit, what's that? So it would be nice to get some definition in here to what that means. And I think it could simply be parentheses and say preliminary final.
And I think it could simply be parentheses. It's a preliminary final. It seems like a lot of wasted time to go back and have a conceptual review for a project that's already had been reviewed by a commission preliminarily and final. And I believe it could be the applicant's discretion, whether they want to come back for a preliminary review or final, depending on the magnitude of the major change that they're talking about. They may not understand all that time and effort. But they may choose to do preliminary review. So I think that's the intent specifically because it says original submit will review approval, including a public hearing, because the final site plan doesn't include a public hearing. So I think it's trying to get at least far back enough that there's a public hearing and not a shared. So I can see how it could be interpreted both ways, but in my opinion, how it's in the supply in other communities is the original submit will be the preliminary and or final site plan. And there's an option in our ordinance to combine those two. So I mean, you could be submitted for that too. I don't think this planning commission, I, I mean, I guess historically speaking, I mean, this plan isn't, doesn't have all the information that's needed to be considered for this. It's missing a lot of things. And I think one of the things that stood out to me is the parking. I don't know. There's now a site data chart. Site data chart comparing the things that Michelle's verbalized here. I believe it would be helpful to compare what was approved, what was amended, what R one is. Village one, village two is, and what we're proposing with the square footage of the building and how, how that interacts with parking calculations and so on. You know, I go by the site, the parking spaces that are proposed, there's four trees that they're going to impact. That's not a flat on the plan. And there's a number of things. I'm not going to go into all of that, but the checklist really needs to be utilized to make sure we have all the data. Solid waste is another one. How pedestrians get from the parking spaces through the building. Barrier free, you know, the police and fire are serving spaces near their facilities and they're out in the building, but wouldn't they need very free access? Maybe to their particular facilities and so on. I don't know. Those are just questions I had. So we wouldn't. We would expect more of a private development project when it comes before us with what's included in the plan set. And I don't think it's a proper to expect the same things for our evaluation. It was a little bit bad.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Yes.
I'll make a motion based on the information provided by staff upon public hearing. I've constructed by the planning commission, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, the planning commission, well, PM, a TPM twenty-three dash zero, 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 one application for major amendment to the approved giver company, old mill site, sign unit development submitted to the city of Dexter until we can talk about the date. To allow applicant more time to reflect following concerns. Generally, the package is incomplete. We shouldn't need to be looking at this right now. This is, I agree with what others have said, the we don't have enough here to even comment on that. We don't know what this building is. We don't know if it even has a floor. I mean, in fact, I, I would just say, I, I agree with Tom for reference to the checklist. Whoever prepared this, Mount Clemens, apparently we don't have architects near Dexter or Ann Arbor, but Mount Clemens, they can come back and pick up our checklist and figure out how to submit the application tagged properly to staff.
So there, there is a motion. Is there a support to that motion? Okay, fast support. Ready? So second, that will motion postpone. Are there additional comments?
I, I concur with everything that's been, all the concerns that you've been expressing. I had expected to come to this meeting tonight and have the architect. Oh, I'm here.
Your tech is online. Did we give any?
Well, explain the plan. Tell us what the plan's all about. Because there are, there's things missing for one thing, like typically we didn't receive a presentation from the, either the developer, the city, and of course, Michelle has done a good job of addressing things, points here, but someone that can speak to the plan itself and explain things about the plan, which are clear. And maybe some of the things that we've brought up could be addressed by the app, or the app in order to be more thorough. So I, I'm concerned about process at the time. It's, it's seems, as you say, if everybody that it seems to be have been rushed through the process, then we should have been able to pull out more. Or we can, with a, with a longer time.
There is.
I would also add as a temporary structure, there's questions, how temporary is it? How long is it going to be there? It's very easy for temporary structures to never be moved. I would say that somehow this should be linked to the new fire station renovation, that the demolition is part of that project. And have a timeline that's built into the construction process. And I think the residents who live around here should know that what temporary means to have. And by the way, we, we see renderings of what this is going to look like. What color is it? What does it look like? And this is like something flipped out of the engineered building catalog or something. But we wouldn't accept that from private.
You mentioned something that I agree. I did like your, how long is it going to take? How long is it permanent? Things tend to be permanent, even if they're discussed as not being permanent. I'm, I'm guessing that that building goes up and it won't ever come down. It'll be re, reused for other city purposes at some point in time. And I don't know about the renovations in the building here itself. Do they, are they torn out once this is done? Are they, does the building go back to what it used to was before it was over? So.
Okay. And how were you going to say, or did I just? It's hard to imagine, but.
I just kind of wrote it down. Michelle, is it in the PUD agreement with this approval? We're saying temporary, but we're changing the use, right? Can we say temporarily change the use for this duration of the building and the fire hall?
So I'll start from my thing and go, when I put in the public hearing notice as well as in the memo or the review to you was, it's a request, it's a change of use for a temporary fire station. It maybe it's worth something, maybe it's semantics. As I've said.
By just, and what I want to, what I'll say is, I'm very tuned into what temporary means because I've worked on a number of projects for temporary. They're still there. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to make it so that when the use is done or that they need for the use here is done, that that is to get out of there.
Right.
So you can amend the PUD agreement in order to have those things in there, like a sunset clause, or after the initial end within six months, the structure must come down, et cetera. But I think you're, you're reading very good question about the length of the temporary use and what happens afterwards. And another thing that I would add to that is the, maybe to think about if this will be postponed, is what happens with the parking spaces? Do those become permanent or do those go, are those returned? If it continues to be on-street parking at that time, and how is that managed?
The, the intent is that it's going to be permanent, that, that those parking structures or car places.
Okay.
DPW is preferred.
So it became in the summary or gathering. That's this, correct? Okay, yeah.
So I mean, I'm generally agreeing that this is kind of a incomplete application. I somewhat don't mind the idea that we're going to use this space that already exists for a fire department. I also had a question about how temporary is temporary? And it may be temporary, permanent.
It's temporary in July scale.
And if so, then I think that you may should have building looks like it goes with these buildings here. If it is going to be a temporary, permanent building, which means roof pitches probably need to go off the rail. Materials should match this building, stuff like that. And then, right, and then I don't like the idea of taking those trees off for a parking bus. I'm over there. I mean, that's kind of.
Oh, yeah.
And honestly, I'm not like the biggest parking requirement guy, but this is a pretty tight side. Anybody who drove here in Park, that, and I would see, so. I don't, and again, like that we're trying to get this fire station going and we're trying to find a place to fit everything and keep the wheel turning. Needs a little more attention. Okay, I'll teach you.
I annoy the architects out here and because I feel like you and you have to take the heat as sort of city representatives to some extent. I don't think we've ever had projects of this magnitude where people haven't shown up in person.
So that was my call because of he's in Mount Clemens and wasn't ready to in the area because we have the virtual action. I told him he could do virtual if he.
Well, I'll speak frankly. If he wants to do work in this town, he should get his blood to this town.
Right. Yeah, I don't know if that's necessarily fair, given the direction. But that is an opinion of the business. Yeah, that's true. That's fair.
I agree. I just didn't want you to be thinking.
Yeah.
We got counsel from you to do that.
When the city is the applicant, we can't be fast and lose what we do. We have to be even more stringent. We have to hold ourselves to a higher standard. And this feels like the planning commission would expect you to be a rubber standard guy. It's deeply disappointing. It's, I can't even express it. And this is probably the most slapdash PUD presentation I've seen in my time on planning, which is more than a decade. I don't know why we had to rush into this. This project is not appropriate for this site. I, I hate the idea of, and my dad was a fireman. I hate the idea of a poor fireman driving one of these engines, getting pulled out in the middle of the Dexter side of the mill, having the street full of cars and people walking around here. It's a disaster waiting to happen. We have no idea how long we'd be in this building. It could definitely be altered next fall. This is a terrible idea. This should not be on this site. And a fire truck coming out of here, hit somebody at Dexter side of the mill, we are responsible for. Terrible idea.
I think, so I, I, I have a couple of things. I think, well, I guess I'll start to that expression in my mind. I don't necessarily agree to terrible idea at this location. I think the fire truck argument can be made when they're leaving downtown, driving through the middle of downtown with a million people crossing the Dairy Queen, I would argue, and that's way longer. That's six months of a year, eight months. Here at the site of the issue, a month. However, I don't know. However, but there is still passageway there, and that's incumbent upon the city to make sure that's clear. I don't, I've never, again, I've been on the street, but I've never seen more complete block that nobody can get through. However, and I do think, looking to some of the standards, I think that, yeah, if this was a private application, you're absolutely right. We would never see this. However, it's not. And while I do agree, the city has to hold, we, we hold ourselves to certain standards, and I agree that the, the application is incomplete. That there is materials that, that we would need. So I'm not saying I would vote to approve tonight. But what I am saying is there's an argument to be made that this is an essential service. I don't know where in the city they can temporarily locate this, that there's not going to be these issues. That, I mean, they, they can move out to the township, I guess, but I think there's also an argument that's only may not even, if this was on PL, the city could zone this public land. We, we could, the city could be exempt from all zoning entrances. So, I mean, again, I think that we, it's, it's okay to use some of these standards because we want to look out for all these things that we work for regular projects. But I think that, again, keeping in mind, this isn't a private project. We're not looking at building a restaurant here. And, and I think my biggest concern was about the structure and the temporary, because again, we've all seen it, temporary. Right. I have a big concern about that. I think we can get that addressed. However, I don't have this earlier concern about them being here forever. I don't think anyone wants to be in this building. The fire, it's, it's going to be very difficult for them to operate out here. I think there, there's no question. But again, I don't know what the other alternatives are. I, I don't know what we're all, I agree, we need more information, but I don't know how that's, and again, maybe work, some of us maybe propose the site just on principle, which again is fine. So no amount of information is going to change that. But for me, even looking at the concept plan, I, I don't know what I would change. Parking was a concern. We're going to look into that. And again, the length of the building there is a concern and ADA accessibility and how that was laying out. But I think those could be addressed, but I think that we're we are looking at, it is, again, the temporary nature of this is an essential service, and I don't see an alternative. Other, right, we got to take this, the path about the firehouse, the location and all these years-long discussions about this. We, we have to take that out of this to certain degree, or asked for now is, is a very limited focus of scope, which again, granted is not complete. There's information that needs to be done here. However, I guess that I think in general, I would be supportive of this with, you know, with, with some additional information provided. I think with our council, meaning our, our legal council, with the memo that they provided, I think has given, has given the process a blessing. Now, again, I know attorneys can all pick it apart in the direction that you want to go. And again, with a private application for a apartment building, a restaurant, I would be different. And, and I don't have a problem saying that because PUDs give us a certain amount of destruction with that. So again, I think that there is information. I would, I would vote to postpone it, but I think in general, I think we, we can reconsider what this uses for and what, what the plan, with, with some limitations in the PUD rig. So with that, Michelle?
So one of the things that I probably shouldn't have explained to you upfront in the beginning of this. The way that the bond language is written, there are only three sites that the city can use money for a temporary fire station as well as for I'm sorry, there's only three locations that the city could look at for the temporary fire station. Or for the use of the bond funding, there's the temporary or for the permanent location. That was eighty-one forty-nine, thirty-five fifteen Broad, or thirty-six hundred Central. That's the DPW we are. You could not do, as I explained earlier, we can't do the temporary fire station while the existing fire station site is either being renovated or as it was to be doing, to be going, a new fire station is built. So that left thirty-five fifteen and thirty-six hundred, thirty-six hundred Central Street. The DPW site has its own challenges, very sloping. Existing underground water main, sanitary sewers, et cetera. And there are already existing buildings, so it's not like we can just plot the temporary structure anywhere. There were all kinds of issues with that and the cost for that as well. I'm glad to take that into consideration. That left this building as sort of the, the location of last year's. So I'm not using that as a reason to excuse, just providing with.
I was, sorry, Tom.
I, yeah, I just want to clarify. I, I basically, I agree with Ben. My comments were, I used to clarify what I said for about the completeness of the application and our understanding of the project, not necessarily the suitability of the site. One thing I think is important that we as a body consider, we are not being asked to select a site or debate council's duty to do that or get into a, a debate about what the best site is. We're being asked to look at this site and, and address that. So I, I think it's important that we don't get distracted and start trying to help council.
You question that was just raised. While we're only three locations, what defined the factor, what was it that said that they were going to relocation? And I raised that along the lines of the property out of Dexter and Arbor Road, which I believe in the city of could that be a temporary location for the whole operation?
And they keep forgetting all the questions, right?
You're gonna complain about the council meeting after.
Wait, just, no, okay, no, I'll, I'll comment, okay. I mean, the idea here is just to build a. You'll build a jail, use all services there. Cause I had the same kind of thought, why don't we build a temporary one there? Trust me.
Well, but then I hear, well, I'm asking, well, get that through it. Yeah.
My favorite thing to do is get into feasibility and due diligence and understand all of what's my big. Thing to do about planning, but we're not asked to do that here in this case, we're asked to look at this site and appropriately establish the site. And I appreciate everybody's input and I appreciate the background regarding this, but I'm, I'm gonna try to stick to this site. And I do have a comment because, um, or a question I'd ask. Um, and Mr. Armstrong, I don't know your particular title, so I'm gonna call you Mr. Armstrong. One of the things that was raised tonight was the fact that this sits on the other side of the railroad tracks. Um, and I'm curious about that, that's something I haven't really considered and I'm curious what your thoughts on it, what your thoughts on it.
Yes, please, thank you, yes, thank you, good to be that up.
Before I answer that, Doug Armstrong, fire chief. I heard several comments about length of time and temporary versus maybe not. All I can speak to is, there is a construction schedule that, that the construction manager is committed to ten months. From time we're out and time we're back, and the structure that is proposed is a rental structure, so it's not something that the city's buying or owning, so there is a. Pretty hefty month-to-month fee that kicks in after, I think it's, I think it's a twelve-month initial. Rental, and then the month-to-month after that goes up quite a bit, so, uh, certainly, any money that gets spent on this relocation. Dilutes the impact of the permanent station we're building, so. I have worked with the design team to minimize what needs to change with regards to the facility. So that we don't use any unnecessary money during this. This relocation time, so just, just wanted to respond to that, cause that is a theme at several points. Um, regarding the, the, the location, certainly there is a risk if a train were to stop and block. Uh, crossings, then our routes. Into the city would be through the, uh, under the viaduct or coming Z Road at the end, we do have a station on Webster Church, it is a straight shot down Z, and then up down Dexter, uh. In Arbor Road, developing a SiO Township is pretty close, and I've already talked to their chief, that's where I came from as fire marshal assistant chief. They have no issues providing backup and, and being an additional responder in the event. We, it, you know, we didn't have equipment in a great location at, at the right time. That's a risk, uh, it's also a risk though of equipment that's housed in the city getting. You know. Through, through the cider mill or, uh, beyond, uh, as well, you know, moving in the other direction, so. We have not, in the twenty-seven years I've been here, had too many instances where we've had a, a long. Obstruction to railroad tracks, but it is theoretically possible. And there were also questions about, uh, the, the plan does include changes that would be made, would be reversed. Upon moving out, and again, minimize to provide a couple office spaces, a couple sleeping rooms. Uh, there was a plan to put a shower in, we even forego putting a shower in because we've got two other stations that. If needed, the truck is, after a fire, the truck is gonna have to go out there and get serviced anyway. So, the firefighters are preparing to, uh, sort of manage that, and as far as ADA. We don't have anything close to ADA at our current station, so, uh, that's really not something that is. Important to us in, uh, citing, uh, a location and as Michelle has indicated. The, the bond language is severely limiting, sort of what we can even consider, and prior to that language being. Enacted, we've been looking for quite some time and there really just aren't. Many locations where we wouldn't have to create both a temporary parking structure, but also a temporary living. Orders, and at least here, the structure exists with some minor tweaks, we can, you know, put some beds in here and, uh, we're, we're not even gonna install a kitchen, so it is gonna be. A bit of a hardship for the firefighters, but they're willing to make that investment in order to, uh, allow the, the long-term solution to, to perform.
Yeah.
Great.
Our protection is even, I saw just.
I'm sorry, yeah. Oh, okay, sorry, we've got three, okay, so, yeah, we are, and thank you, that's been, that was very helpful, thank you, Tom for coming, but do you have a follow-up on that?
A couple of things.
Sorry. Uh, did you want, uh, Chief Armstrong?
No, Chief Armstrong, thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you.
But everyone's my understanding that the trains that come through here are very long, generally speaking, they, they, they lock that and pointing off to Z Road, that they could come down from Webster Township is. Very helpful, um, when, when I was talking about that, you don't see, I mean, it's. Parking, trip generation for this building being used are gonna, I think I mentioned it before, but. It's gonna be something I would wanna look at because I maybe consider like how many trips is it out? Straight out, by the mill and everything, so that use is gonna have trip generation based on those employees that are here. Um, working full-time, so it's gonna be good to know, I mean, this, this building is used by, in a lot of different fashions, office, meeting space, you know. These meetings, fire now, police eventually, fire and police potentially, so it'd be good to understand those things, again, with the site data chart or trip generation or something like that.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Jim, I know you do, but there's also, I think the architect one.
His name is David Gasson.
David Gasson?
Uh, there's a couple, oh, yes, more things to, just about, about part of, uh, to, to Tom's point. The original building that was planned to be erected was actually two bays, and. When we came out and measured and walked the site and looked at it. We were able to actually reduce that to a single bay, and that frees up some additional parking off to the side in the back here that was not available. In the original plan, and so we have decreased the number of spaces that we are going to disrupt. Uh, from the parking lot, obviously the ones where the building's gonna go are gonna be, uh, disrupted, and there will be a few that need to have. Sort of signage to, to be reserved, but we've got the ability now to, to put. Uh, a number of cars, uh, the side of the building and kind of, this is a bad back here, areas that typically the public will. Utilize to park it away, uh, did you have any more questions?
Uh, so, did you have one specifically for Chief Armstrong?
I did, okay. Yeah, again, I hate to interrupt the architect.
Well, that's, I guess, well, we actually, I'm, I'm, I'm going to go.
First of all, I, I have. Only while you were making, when you were speaking, I objected to one thing you said, ADA access, I object strongly to the fact that we don't have it there, so what difference does it make? If we don't have it here, that, that's unacceptable, but having said that, I'm curious. I'm curious, you know. Which of your fire trucks will be here, I know the other, the rest of them are gonna be way out in the other. Fire station, is this gonna be a, they, is it gonna be a tanker truck or is this gonna be a rescue?
We're, we're gonna have an engine, and then by shortening the bay, we can use underneath to have our, our, our medical rescue squad. So, the, the two trucks that respond primarily in the city from eighty-one forty currently are the two that will be here and available, yes.
Oh, okay.
Cause we're gonna use the underground garage that already exists here, and it's only possible because the building is, is, is shrinking a bit, and my comment to ADA was, was. Specifically referencing the firefighters who are working in operationally, we don't need the ADA access because our, our firefighters are already. Uh, physically able to complete their, their jobs, and if they weren't. And they needed special ADA access, they, they, we probably wouldn't be able to use them operationally, so I, I, it wasn't downplaying. The importance of that and certainly will have that in the new facility, but.
And there are D P W spaces, this is already being accessible.
Oh, wait, Tom, is it quicker that way, you got a line?
Yeah, first of all, ADA is a building permit issue, it's not a planning issue generally, and, and there is exemptions for, for, uh. Firefighters and all kinds of, uh, um, rescue services and things like that, it doesn't apply the way a private business, it applies to a private business. And it's actually a very free, so it's definitely not something for us to generally worry about.
Okay, so, all right, I think we might be done for you, thank you, I'm here, again, thank you very much, okay, uh, Mr. Gasson, Gasson, please, uh, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, yes, first of all, thank you very much, David Gasson with Partners in Architecture and. Apologize for not being there in person, it certainly sounds like, um, that has been an issue, I would normally be there, however, I could not be there at the time of the meeting. Um, but there are a couple of great points, uh, brought up, I think in general, what we were asking for is a. A use change permitted in the P U D, and, you know, there were a lot of site plan issues discussed here, and some of them have been answered amongst yourself and. Some, uh, by Chief Armstrong, I'll underline a couple of those and, and really wanna make myself available to. Any questions you might have that I don't answer in my kind of general comments here, but. Uh, barrier free, as it was mentioned by Mr. Phillips, uh, is, is a issue in general, but for first responders, it's a, um. It's a, uh, an exception in the code, uh, they're able-bodied people, their facilities don't need to meet ADA or. Barrier-free requirements, however, the office area as the facility is now is accessible, so. Public going to the office end of things certainly have a means, uh, from an accessibility standpoint. Um, parking, as, uh, Chief mentioned, is somewhat alleviated from the. Three displaced spaces that you would, you see on your plan because of the smaller building, basically three additional or three spaces would be. Uh, available because of the smaller building. And overall, the, you know, parking calculations being an item for a site plan, I get that. Um, that should have been, uh, somewhat indicated there, but with the six additional. Uh, it could be kind of stated that there's more in the end result than there are in the current situation if those six. Get added and remain. Um, another important item, I think, was discussed and maybe even answered, but just to underline it again, it was temporary, uh, request and. The product or the, the building is a rental, as Chief mentioned, and it's a product, so it's not designed, it's basically a catalog. Item, and it's linked to the project, uh, at Main Street, so it's a twelve-month duration, so it will be. Installed by the vendor, uh, and removed by the vendor, and, um, the grounds will be made as they were, uh, before they arrived. So there won't be any noticeable difference in the site when they leave. If they had to, if construction for whatever reason goes beyond the twelve months. Uh, there's a month-to-month kind of application to it, but as the chief alluded to and as everybody can imagine. The sooner you can get out of there, the better from a cost standpoint, so it will be something that's gonna be pushed to get. Done within the twelve months that we're anticipating, I don't think it'll go anything further than that. Um, another thing mentioned was trees along Huron Street, uh, yes, there is gonna be some displacement and change for those spaces. And that looks to be an improvement for the site in, in the permanent long-term fashion, not just as part of this temporary. Um, need in terms of, you know, uh, providing, uh, uh, parking for the site. Hazardous materials brought up, there is no hazardous material stored within the facility. Um, the temp, the temporary structure or within the section C of the existing building. There'll be the normal items that are on the truck, uh, for when firefighters on site doing their duties, but. Nothing will be stored in the temporary facility or in the building itself. Uh, there won't be any additional signage that we permit in any nature, uh, there will be. Uh, reserved for sheriff parking, reserved for firefighter parking signage, but that's it, but no signage for the function of, of this use. Uh, hopefully, that kind of covers the big part of, uh, the questions I think I heard, uh, tonight. If there's anything I missed that you think I should be able to answer for you, I'd be, be happy to try to address it.
Thank you, that, that was helpful, if you can answer some of the questions we, we raised. Um, I think, Jim, yes, you wanted to say something, I think I was like, hi, do you also have your hand up earlier? No, okay, yes.
Yeah, I got the idea that we should just be looking at the presentation, this is a P U D. This is P U D change, and there's a different standard that comes with that, and that's there, and it was necessary material benefits. And under the, the benefit standard is always appropriate to question about the site, it's appropriate to P U D, always, period. Always, you know what I mean. It's not appropriate. This is not appropriate for the site. And I'm sorry, the line I didn't hear the way it was. It's all right, not gonna be much consolation, the guy just walked over to the side of the mill.
Good, I have additional thoughts, uh. One of the comments brought up by the architect I'll reference, the parking issue, which I know, uh, one of the members probably could brought up, which. I think, again, this, this could potentially help it at all, which is why I have to clarify, clarify a question to Michelle, those are permanently installed spaces, that gets those cars that are now parked on the street. Off onto a, a leased out apartment space, so I think that could help, and the other question I think to, to parking is that. It, we have, how often is this built, how often is this parking lot full, I mean, I'd be guessing like.
Everyone there is a.
And even at that, I guess, at most of our council meetings, probably the parking lot's not full. I mean, we're talking about a once-a-year-Christmas type of thing, so I, I'm not necessarily concerned about, and there's plenty of street parking around here, but my biggest concern again is, is. Parking for the, uh, for the firefighters, the employees there, so that was a question, and I think Chief Armstrong answered that about how, how much, how that's gonna be dealt with. Um, so again, I mean, I think that, that is a relative fact, one question I, I, I wanted to ask, which hasn't been brought up yet. Although there isn't, at the current facility now, obviously I haven't walked up there in a while, there's no walk-up services, there, there's no sheriff member that's up there at that station continuing staff, correct? Right.
It's a, it's a substation, um, with limited, um. They, there are no set hours, it's not like, it's always nine, eight AM to five PM. If they have, they will, they have access to it twenty-four seven, like I wrote in my report, they would be here. But they will come and go or start an inchious. Out at the township, they will use, they'll use.
Their vehicle, their private vehicle out, their private vehicle somewhere.
Yes.
And then. Right, so the public is, is, there's no public walk-up track, right, then?
Not generally, have people walked up to the station even?
I mean, yes, right.
And if somebody's there, caught someone, yes, and that would be the same thing here, but the substation is generally not. I, I think I'm talking specifically about police, you may be talking about fire.
Well, I've kind of talked about both, and I was getting to the traffic question, basically, how much. That, that vehicular.
I mean, people obviously are familiar that that's where. The sheriff operates out of, so they do show up, but there's a box, and they punch a button, and it calls dispatch, and dispatch calls one of the officers, and then the officer. If he's available, she's available, drives back to meet them.
Okay.
Or set up a time. And they would envision maybe doing, I don't know if they would envision doing the same thing here, if, like, yeah, put a call box in it, but. You know, or they could just call nine-one-one and say, hey, I.
Right.
Yeah, they may send, they may send them to the side of the patient. To maybe.
That's a good question, okay, so, Arty, I think you want, I'm gonna.
Well, about parking and about all the things that have been said recently. It, it's great information, it's great answers to our questions, but it needs to be on the plan.
No, that's.
I'm there, I can't, we've had my neighbors come in and say, hey. Um, you know, parking could be an issue, but I can't really say it's going to be or not gonna be, I can say we're resuming more spaces and we're not, you know, even. But does that work for what the building is capable of requiring parking for, so. For me, I really need it in the plans, in a narrative that goes together with the approval and you can say, hey. When it doesn't work, this is how that decision was made.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I think to that fact, like I said, the architect, um, online, that answered a lot of our questions, that, that I'm like and writing too, right, so that, exactly, like, I think it answered some of the questions. But I do agree with Tom, it, it needed an application.
I didn't know there would be two trucks there, one's in the basement, and got an break, I think.
But where they just don't operate, I don't know. Yes.
Just real quick, others mentioned here that if somebody gets hit by the side of the mill by a fire truck, and it's our fault, that is not the case, and consequently, we are not responsible for, uh, that's three and safety.
That is not what I said, uh.
Uh, listen to it again, listen to it again. Uh listen to it again, listen to it again.
Okay, so e- e- either way, I think I'm gonna say, um. Okay, so we've also, is there anything else? I think right now we do have a motion on the table to postpone. Now, we did not put a date on that. Michelle.
So. To get the site plan into the. Into the shape that would be needed, I would at least say to take. To take it out. Two months if he's able to get it done and provide it ahead of time, but if you have to put a date, um.
No, I don't think we necessarily, we don't need to, unless is there a concern that we want to have a date? I don't think we, no, I was just asking.
I thought it had to have a a date like the next meeting or within two.
I guess the post, we don't really, it puts it aside, but we don't want to table it, so.
Right.
Um. So then we, okay, so you needed a date certain, so, okay, so sorry, going back to what you're saying now, so you're saying about two months out?
Yeah, by the decent, by the December meeting.
Okay, so. Okay, I think you made the motion, I forgot who seconded it.
I seconded it.
Okay, Jen seconded it, okay. Is that okay?
I just want to say this though, Tom. If I came off that way. As a lawyer, I feel it's important for me to say legally, no, you're correct, of course. But I do think there's a moral dimension here, and I think when we recognize the risk. There's a moral responsibility. But legally, yes, you're correct, legally, that is not what I intended to say.
Okay, thank you.
I was my hat, lost my hat.
Okay, yes.
Before you figure out the.
Yes.
Architect.
Additional comments, please.
I I was just gonna add a comment on parking and maybe it's a moot point now, but since I'm talking, I'll say it. If we're adding six parking spaces and we're displacing three. Uh and we're really adding to the site as a whole. In terms of parking count. And we're only using the bus- the building as it was previously approved, we're not adding. Any square footage to the building, we're adding a building for a. Vehicle, we're not adding any additional parking burden, we're actually adding spaces to the site. Um and I'll I'll indicate that, uh and it sounds like I'll have a chance to. Put parking calculations on a plan here in the near future, so I'll indicate that.
Great, yes, thank you, that would be helpful.
What else do I remember that I said here? Are there farms that are going to actually revise your twenty questions that I think I've said now?
There would be overnight accommodations. Be- because, so let's be clear, if this was just using the building for office space.
Yeah.
There, the only amendment that would be coming in front of you would be because of the temporary structure. Um so one way or the other, there's an amendment, however, they are going to have overnight accommodations. For up to three. But that does not mean that there will always be three. Um city council, and I will, I will say, no, speaker chief, um. Had offered that instead of having overnight, um whether it be both people and equipment. Overnight could be done at the townships. But if there was a call that needed to come into Dexter, then the service is coming from the township, and that was not acceptable to city council.
Yeah, I mean, I don't. Somebody sleep, I mean, the building is vastly, I think, underutilized as it is.
It would close off, I mean, there are.
Yeah, I I don't.
Requirements, but that was that building.
Right, exactly, I don't think we need to go into that detail, but that was good to know when you were saying.
Well, my question related to parking. Yeah, and as you expressed. That it really isn't a change in that regard, the use of that. It's office, there's only people there.
I mean, it could be filled with a lot more people at the office, but. Um, but no, good point. Okay, so any other high hopes and thoughts? We we gave a lot, um. Um, Michelle, you got, huh?
Uh, one of the residents. Who lived nearby, I think it was, Mrs. Jay.
Yeah.
Mentioned that potentially. Yeah, the parking could be used at Alfa.
That's one of the things that I would talk about, so when you redoes the plan, will people think that?
Yeah, thank you. Do you think the street parking still goes in? I don't like the idea of removing trees, but rather than.
Rather than that, for the situation.
No, what is, what is happening, the street parking, that's that's our point, right, is that has to be identified, if that's going to happen.
Oh, well, I have a look, so there are some trees in the way.
There, I don't know if it's gonna happen or not.
But I don't really think that has to be, but this is neither, this really is neither here or there. I don't think the city's going to have a problem with not combining with parking, because anything that adds. Cost to temporary location takes away from the limited budget that they have. For the permanent, so the shared parking is definitely something that can.
So, yeah, it'll probably be, though, yeah, a good. You have, would you possibly be able to have an answer to that? At the next meeting, like, is that parking going in, yes or no?
I should have an answer to you, I don't know that I'll have a plan.
Yeah, no, no, that's okay, I'll, yeah, I think at least an answer, yes, it's. Is that really relevant to some people's discussion or.
Yes.
Uh thought, thought, decision making process, so. Uh, okay.
One last question. Will Carlisle Wardman have an opportunity to review and respond to everything as well?
If planning commission would like that, I have no problem with that. It doesn't hurt my feelings.
I I don't, I mean, I don't care, I don't know if this necessary, but.
I will have both Carlisle Wardman and O H L review.
No.
And we'll do it like we would if this were the private.
Yeah, I think it was just some of the questions I had here. Uh, we don't have a public comment right now, but we will actually. In a little bit, we're gonna have another opportunity, um. Okay, so I think I've got everything addressed, so there is the motion to postpone. That was put forward by Phillips, seconded by Cardy, and we have a roll call, please.
By December P C meeting.
I'm sorry?
By December P C.
Oh, yes, the December P C meeting is when this would be postponed to.
Phillips?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yeah.
Over?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Cardy?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay, thank you, I am postponed, thank you for your uh presentation, your comments. Thank you, Chief Park, that was very helpful, um. Here. Uh, free races and participation, we have none tonight, reports of all officers, uh, I don't have any report tonight. If I have anything to share.
We had a um.
You go to the meeting?
C V A meeting, but I was separate with all the regulations, uh rules of procedure for the.
But you didn't debate.
It's the thing we do.
All right, they know, yeah.
I just an observation for as a member of the public, um. I I think that the temporary structure reached up a good. Point about this site in general, that maybe there's some consideration by. Council to look at a master plan for for this whole parcel. Um in developing in the future.
Say that again, whatever you need to make, but great. Um, and our executive, oh, sorry, yes. No.
Two issues, I'm sure you've all reviewed the packet very thoroughly, but for him, it happened, Michelle's report was extremely detailed, this particular walk around. Contained a lot of very interesting tidbits about a lot of issues, so kudos.
Yeah.
To take us back to former projects, I had the. The opportunity to uh be next to the Dexter King of Care. For uh more than an hour of rush hour morning. Recently, and we had debated a ton about how the traffic would affect the side street and how the traffic would flow through the site. And I just thought it was interesting, being out there for more than an hour, there's absolutely no impact on the drop off, the children drop off, but. Traffic went very, very, as we wish, like almost everyone came in off Main Street, almost everyone left on Side Street and went out to Main Street. It's very low on factors, it's much more, I think it's a much more low on factors than than people were worried about, and. I bet the neighborhood feels the same way.
Yeah, I mean, because speaking of which, I'm almost part of that neighborhood, I walk by that site every single day, usually once or twice, and I have to. Admit to your point, I was wrong, I was one of the ones so far, now granted, I don't know the population anymore, but. So far, I've observed it flowing exactly how we want, and I felt like saying, yeah, you know, that was, I I was against that project, and I think it is working out well, it's been signed, the curve was in there, they pull up. So so far, so good. Uh, yeah, other, uh, Tom, you have something?
I know I've mentioned this before, but um I'd really like to get a second T V.
They're working, uh, oh, they're not, you're not, but they are working on it.
Oh, yeah.
There were, there were. Yes, you know, it is being worked on, thank you.
I agree, because they had to. Okay, um, what else? Okay, so right, our executive is out tonight, um committee reports, we have C V A. Uh, paneling report, yeah, very thorough. Um, report, get pointed out, thank you, Michelle, um, any comments on that? Michelle, anything else you have to add?
Uh, I don't think I have any verbal updates or view on things as we're. Uh, talking, um, I know it's not in here, but you probably all know, uh Hotel Hillman has closed, um. Because the um. It is a bankruptcy situation, there is, the city will not be doing anything for a while. So anybody asking about is it released, is it going to be sold, um until we hear from. The bankruptcy, the judicial bankruptcy. Judge, agent, I don't know what you call that person, um, nothing will happen. For a little bit, so, um. But the city council will be. Obviously, they can discuss whether they want to continue the lease after the whole. Bankruptcy thing is taken care of, or do they want to, I. And I don't want to sell it, um. They might, it will go to the legal, um, or they might look at it for something else.
Well, that's a great station. But yeah, I don't know, should talk, so there you go, full circle.
Touche, Tom, touche. So, uh, but whatever. Different use, if that is to be in the future. It will continue.
We want to sell last one, you said?
A full proper cycle plan.
Okay, if they need one, I mean, what, I don't know what they.
I said it's changed.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
One of my neighbors thought that she can't wait for an ice cream store or a pizza place to open.
The cookie monster. Okay, uh, thank you, Michelle, uh. Okay, citizens wishing you'd rest permission, at this time, if anybody would like to rest permission, please uh either raise your hand online, just slide the round with anyone on there, or step forward and state your name and address, please.
Hi.
Yes, please, to the audio.
Yeah, could you blow up, please? Um. I'm really concerned about putting these parking spaces on the street, which side of the street, or we're talking about both sides of the street.
Only the ones not.
In fact, yeah, and it would be. Currently, there's one.
Right.
They would take them out between the trees. Let me express like what my concerns is. The yellow boxes are down here, and we all walk down the street, and we need to have a place to pull, you know, just to walk off the street and let the cars go by. In the parking and well sides, we got nowhere to go.
I can, that's why we're, the planning commission is through with that.
Right, yes.
I wasn't sure what you were talking about, and you know, both sides of the street.
Uh, no, no, that's.
And my dog.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anybody else like to address the question, yes, sir? Please, make your name and address again, should be.
Ron, or seven, six, five, four, fourth street, uh, I appreciate the deliberations and questions that I heard tonight and some of the response I got, I appreciate your work. I know, uh, you know, you're divorced yourself from the, from the. Issues surrounding this specific issue. But I I felt similar response uh from council and actually. Like Michelle was, sound to me a bit disingenuous, because you were faced with these choices. By design, by design of the council, that you only have for you, you could have had more. You could have had probably some that would have potentially worked a lot better, but you were not given an opportunity. And that. Is. Is the understanding that you're being pushed, the planning commission is being pushed into this decision, and you, your first attempt, you've got a very inadequate proposal out. Which to me is a sign of some of the. The lack of consideration, the lack of thought on this about the way you're proceeding on this decision, um. And all they. Won't hide, I mean, I I remember saying somebody who said they were the map site, that my map site was. Specifically taken off the table by the council, by design of the council, didn't actually, but it was. For whatever use. And so it simply was no longer an option. And I feel like. That when when the council comes to you of these kind of applications, they are in essence politically pushing you. Towards, and I I I'm just cautioning, and I suggest that, you know, if it's an inadequate site, it's an inadequate site, if you're. Being asked to continue to circumvent your own zoning ordinances. And regulations in order to meet the applicants P U D. I think you should give long thoughtful consideration to that, and I understand that, yes, we're on time constraints, we have. Critical need. But we we'd ask, those of us who maybe had asked. That council simply stepped back from this process. They said they could live in that fire station, live in that fire station until you can build a problem. Separated or from. But uh, I I think there are better choices out there for you all, I think you should be offered. A better than what you're being given. At your, your time, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to address the question? Anybody else? Nobody on the line? Okay, so with that, our old business, we have none. Uh, now new business, we have none, and so for those business for. October, election of officers, uh, we put off for a little bit, I did my quest to print the power. But you can formulate your uh election uh some speeches now.
Sure you want to vote now?
Yeah, that's true.
That's how we, that's actually.
Oh, that's that's better, right, uh, okay, then uh the superior storage, that will be something that's great.
Yes, that will be ready.
Okay.
I if I can, Rockwell, I think you will be pleased that the change is going to be made. The business condos in the front, um, that that's a huge step, um. Um, it 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 reflects, just listen to the comments that came out of both planning commission and council. Um, there's less storage units in the back, there still are some, but. You've got those business condos up in the front, um, I'm still pleased that probably needs to be tweaked, probably. But that's a, that's a huge step in the direction that. Was was.
Good to hear, and I assume we don't have, sorry, we don't have the helm or the.
No. Um, I anticipate Cal coming in uh in October for a November meeting. Mill Creek uh Platts did give additional approval by council, um, but I don't see that one coming in till like. December, maybe in next year.
Okay, thank you.
With the changes. Do they still have a fence around the most site?
The question of whether they need or want. Uh, the ordinance will allow them to have a fence. Not more than six feet, no hard water, but because it's a special use, planning commission can determine whether they want to allow it. Or want something that's decorative. So I think that the applicant is amenable to working.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so with that, citizens wishing you'd asked the question. Does anybody have like, address the question? Yeah.
Again.
Z man, okay, uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Uh, Melissa, second, uh, Cardy, on favor of adjournment, say aye, aye, both, not meetings. Thank you all.